Reporting in progress.
Hmm hmm hmm. Let's see.
You're being, it's seven o'clock, I would like to call the February 28th. This community order and plan that it's. On that. Yeah. And by.
I want, but you can't see me.
Okay.
You have to, the host has to start the video for me.
Uh, he sit in, Mr. President. Uh, just, yeah, there are four members present. Variance is spring history for from both. Five people here, wild card. Now, for that, who's up? See, four, two, five, I don't know. Uh, Mr. Springfield, you're on there.
Uh, we're ready to proceed.
What's the other? What's? There is that, okay, you want to go forward or you want to learn?
Everybody said five. So for zoning board of appeals requires super would do it. So it has to be more positive. It's not three and two S. There's only four members present. Have to all go.
Boy. Hi, uh, just from round rules here. If the, we have two cases tonight, the appropriate times to annual tip. Or after the hour, so see, uh, anywhere else he's first time listed down by yourself by name and address. Helps with money just. Yep, okay, we get opportunity to present this case for. They have, or we already have questions. That point was. They're. At that point, we will let see if the. Uh, at the end of the public hearing. The very local stage, since there are students and socialists, which not offering. Lots of, you know, close, nothing else. Uh, cell phones that they have and put on a hybrid. Uh, I guess this is the folks, huh?
Great. Great. Uh, first variance tonight is VAR twenty-four zero zero one. One, One Water Street, here Springfield, Brooklyn, Blue Turtle LLC owner. The variances are section seven point two dash five A and seven point two dash five B. Will allow substantial improvement to existing historic structure in the floodplain without elevating a floodproof. In number two, six, nine, one, eight, three, zero, eight, seven, eight, eight, MDD zone. And I have previously today. Correct, check the mailings. In the mailings. We go back. Mailings noticed by mail. Nine point one eight B, dash eight B. Now, the certain criteria. They'll. Then. I view them according to that criteria, I found. H. Great. Right.
Evening, Commissioners, Peter Springfield, architects on five Star Street, mystic. Here tonight, uh, representing Blue Turtle LLC, the owner of. This. Um, here tonight, seeking a little bit of. Um, we have a part building in the center of downtown. Just.
Speak into the microphone, please.
Certainly, is there anything?
It's better, yeah.
Okay. Um, I introduce into your record here. It's in a state, state of Connecticut, part of the economic community, showing this building. But here, I'm just gonna interrupt. When I'm showing, I'm gonna show on screen, so if you wanna lay a flat. Uh, this flip it towards. This document is from the state essentially. Website that shows this building be our district. Um, this building is, uh, well, popular. As far as the building, uh, which they sold Blue Turtle LLC a year. And, um, building is in fairly. A shape. Built in. Pre-Civil War, the pre-Civil War building. Town documents say that the building is built in nineteen. Correct, look at the state. It was built pre-Civil War. Building is supposed. All the, uh. Recent additions to it over the years. But it is pretty much. Uh, we have been before the, uh, our district mission. Very minor experience building. Like. Plan now is to change what was a business use. This more was using. For your owner, uh, as a tent, or as loose phones. Especially a fast food business. Seating indoors, all not seen. And they'll occupy them. Um, and second floor will consist of single bed. Um, we have been before the planning and zoning commission. But we have, uh, see the group of what we're doing here with the caveat that we want to see the percent rule. So, um. We have a contractor who is look over the building, plans to make changes. And they have estimated the cost are exceed. The. Uh, the town assessor, um, list the building value, raise value at two hundred and seventy-six thousand. That means it's the fifty percent of that. Cool. That would be about a hundred and thirty. Oh. Hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars. Pricing that we got for renovating the building. Hundred fifty for. I'm gonna submit the street card as well.
I don't be excepted to.
Um, the regulations do allow us to go out independent pricing. By higher, to do that. We're able to. Get a higher value on. Off. That value by the craters was. Eight thousand, hundred and fifty percent of that is a hundred and seventy-five. No, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Which is still well below. My. Well.
No one there is.
Um, I have here the site kind of building. See, it's very small lot, this right here, building, those up, almost the entire width. Very close up. One of the problems with you, uh, having a public, uh, commercial use on the first floor is. Um, you go in the building, there's a pitch floor, so on two sides, about eight inches of the sidewalk. It's just down to the back. Nine inches over. Walk in, there's. Noticeable. Uh, there is a crawl space, well, low to the ground. Something frowned upon. So what we're proposing to do is to remove the wood frame floor. For concrete slab. Doing that, we would fill up crawl space.
Not interesting, so far.
They put that whole thing up, I can't believe that.
That's asshole. The other benefit.
Well, the. Sound is terrible.
Have that sub created space that we fill up with water, but.
We could use.
Into some compliance. Also be adding floodbeds. The then. Space above the slab, but that water, the floodbeds with that water bin. Requirement in the flood. This is another thing we could do to create use. Do the elevation. I have here the reference, here, sorry to interrupt, you could. Hold her away and move that, and so closer use. So in this drawing here, we have four elevations, building, this front. This is the front of the building facing. Water Street. These are the two sides of the building, now there's driveway that goes down the side. Elevation here. And this is the back. And what you'll notice here are these two red lines. Uh, the lower red line represents flood elevation. Elevation left. Our floors can be at about. Five or four. Um, then there's something known as the signs, but. But that is in regulations, buildings. So that's the second line. Well. So if we were to comply with the flood zone regulations. We would have to lift this building up, do that. That represents. Doing that, we would. Accessible. So, on that standpoint, you, our purpose is not to raise. Then in your regulation. Which I'll enter into the reference. Is the town brought stunning?
Yeah, we, I mean, we also.
Um, section seven point two dash eight point A. Allows for specific situation variances for buildings on work register. And it's a pretty short and sweet. They. No other. Criteria that they require of. That'd be. And follow up on that, the subject property is listed on the national data. Those improvements have been.
Um, well, it's only listed on a Connecticut. Or register.
Please on the national.
Down the national. That in exhibit A. This is good.
I was also informed by the planner that that's basis.
Yeah.
Um. So. So I've done these variances. For. Typically, what they like to see is some attempt by owner to familiarize some of the flood zone issues. So in our case, what we're doing, which is I mentioned before, is we're gonna pull up the lower grade crawl space area. Positive. We're going to be adding floodbeds, that water. Apply. Equal. Uh, in addition to that, we have mechanical system, electric system. We'll be redone, and they're all gonna be raised above the base. Back elevation. Human area. Edition on the back. All our mechanical. We're also going to move all the electrical, uh, service panels of the base. Edition. Earlier, uh, heat and cooling. Essentially, we're doing three things. So. Doing that, we're still retaining the character of this. Facing this building. So in essence, that's my presentation.
You say you're raising everything above the base, are you going to both the design, what elevation, or above the base, but? Of this, okay. For electrical.
Will be some electrical devices that are down lower. That's the restaurant, there's one cooking. Vision. Those types. All again. All those electrical loads. Below the base, but, uh, there is a method waterproofing notice.
There's no question, this is a zone A and A.
It is.
Is it in AE or is it in?
A, E, but it's not a limb law. Possibly. Not in that.
But it is A E. About our regulations. Is that when you agree that now?
Right. I believe there's.
You have the zoning rights in front of you.
Oh, yeah.
So. I'm looking the seven point two dash four A. You know, the A zone requirement. Okay, seven dash seven. Your requirements would be in seven two four eight two. Be that.
Yes.
That's something you're gonna have to work out. You get the variance from the zoning. And when we get to zone A E. Design eight, seven, dash, ten.
I'm sorry, I know you're redirecting, you can bring it closer, more directly.
Eight, seven, dash, ten. Essentially, you, you would have to combine with seven point two dash five B, correct? Non-residential structure.
That's right.
That's part of what we would be bringing a variance from. Be granted in there.
Right, I think I, uh, my application, six, sections, rest.
Well, you, you didn't, you asked for them, but you didn't cite any of the. The rigs. That's why I'm using.
I didn't see the bricks, the example for. Saying, uh, well, it's five B, but.
Seven point two dash eight. A. And I, I handed that on.
That's, that's. From the time market.
Uh, it was true.
Yeah, was it? Yes, three.
That's, that's a person.
That wasn't. I don't know.
Right, he want, well, he wants the way. Seven point two dash five B, because it's a non-residential structure.
I understand that, but I couldn't find. Presentation.
Well, my hardships, David, and I mentioned that section there, we're not looking for relief from that. Giving us opportunity to give them that. That section allows him to ask.
Right.
Now, he's not asking for variance from that, he's using that to ask.
Uh, five A or five B.
Right, he's using that section allows him to ask. Yeah.
And it sets the criteria for granting it rather than the normal portion.
It's a little different, yes. Right.
Is it, yes, the question.
Yeah.
Always school. This way.
So, okay, I can jump. Interrupt each one. Mostly, this is, um, it's a special type of hardship because of the historical nature. So it kind of gives a little, it's a, it's a little leeway to save it. Be able to keep it the way it is. So you are allowed relief based on the applicant giving, giving some back, and he's. Examples of applying some regulations in order to keep it as is, maintain it historically. It's a little different than our standard variances.
But. Yeah, this is ignorant. Books and race. And. Part. Most.
It's really an all or nothing. It's no, there's no purpose raising it. Can't raise it all. FEMA won't recognize it as giving any. It's. That's why, that's why FEMA allows this historic district regulations be presented as a variant. Even does agree that this, this isn't out for them, they give some. He's elevating some features and some mechanical. Features that would be most likely claimed on.
Anything I could. Not saying on. Or. Thing that bothers. Really don't want to set stage. There are, there are others to it. They would hate to be the one, one of the people who makes sense of this. Anybody can come. And as a whole, I have a building.
Oh, um. The precedent has been already set, already. But I will say, if we were building a new building. Decentralized. Um, in the flood zone. In that case, what we have to do, commercial on the first floor, so you can do what's called dry flood group. Now, that can be accomplished in new building. But in an old building, it's very difficult. So. FEMA will allow commercial building below the base, well, they. Which have to drive flood. As one. Old building is. Falls. Stand up. Hydro. With an old building basically. Building done. Question. Wow.
And then the other.
Well, uh, I don't know of any other variant. Or here. Uh, I did have a case for. Or doing that. I look on the other side. And if I'm. Parents, I have two not in rotten. They had to do this, Nate, they gave, building stayed the same, one of them with. The sort of nature of that residential building was the foundation. Everything. Everything, or area inside was raised. But the. That was a resident. And another one was a resident. We don't. Third floors. Those houses were on the.
One last question.
Leave on that state doctor's.
Start the the next next start district.
And that checks out when I walk through it. Play a little later than that. On that.
Is everybody here to speak in there or on position?
Bruce, did you have any questions?
No, go ahead. Just again, the sound is terrible.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So if you guys can speak into the microphone, and I'm not sure Tom has the right microphone setup enabled. But I'm looking at the closed captions, so that's the only way I can tell what's going on.
Really have to speak.
Are you good? Is this better?
Yeah.
Bruce?
Yeah.
You have to literally.
You gotta really.
You almost have to eat it. Uh, there are some people on as participants. If any of these people want to raise their hands to speak, and they see people, we already living stairs, all breathe, ushering leaks. You know. No, he has a wrist.
All right. That's true.
I have nothing else.
We'll see your remarks.
No, thank you.
I. We'll stay on your hearing. Yeah.
Okay, the the second variance. Height is. V A R twenty four zero 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 two. Thirty five west. Road, Brian Phillips. Applicant that goes. But our variance restriction five one dash eight. Point one point eight, allow building height of sixty two feet. Twenty eight residential life care service. The twenty eight is the maximum height. In numbers, one, six, eight, nine, zero, six, three, eight, eight, five, five, six, R twelve zone. And. And for the record, the mailings. There's. And found. Oh. Hello, gentlemen.
It's on, yeah, just name it.
Bruce, can you hear now? Is it any better?
No, it's not. If people would speak into the microphones, it might be better, but so far. Not too, not too good, but I can kind of follow it and with the closed captions, I can see what's going on.
Okay, gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for your time. I know it's a long day. Appreciate it. My name is Billy Nelson. I'm the CEO at Fairview, turn two thirty five Wester Town Road. I would like to just provide a very brief historical review for our organization before I turn it over to our civil engineer who will get into more of the technical aspects of the project. Been in my position for approximately five years, just shy of that. Review has been serving seniors in southeastern Connecticut since eighteen ninety two. We are a standalone nonprofit facility. So every dollar we earn is reinvested back into our organization. For the benefit and the purpose of the residents we serve. Both in the nursing home and independent building, as well as the employees who are providing the five star rated care that we we provide. Um. For many years, Fairview had been thought of as primarily a nursing home business. There are approximately two hundred nursing homes in the state of Connecticut. The nursing home was erected roughly in nineteen seventy six. However. In two thousand and fourteen, we stopped being licensed as a standalone nursing home. And we became what is called a continuing care retirement community or a life plan community. There are only twenty three of us in the state of Connecticut. Fairview being the only nonprofit life plan community in southeastern Connecticut. Um, in two thousand and fourteen, the phase one. Project began with the execution of twenty three entrance fee homes referred to as Thames Edge. Uh, and two years later, in two thousand and sixteen, it followed suit with seventeen additional entrance fee homes, completing the Thames Edge. Uh, project. There had always been since going back to two thousand and ten, the. The. Intent to conduct a phase three expansion project, which is what we are here this evening to talk to about most specifically the height variance. Um. From my perspective, I'm going to give you an operational perspective of why we are seeking this particular variance this evening on the scope of the project that you're going to see momentarily. Being a hundred and thirty year old organization has pros and cons. We're approaching the completion of a life plan community sort of in piecemeal and in different phases and different steps. It's extremely important to us that the completion of this expansion. The community feels like we are one community, not two separate communities. Um, the current community is lacking in many of the amenity features and amenity space. That are normal and expected in a life plan residential community. And that is just because we're pursuing an increments. In the new structure that we are proposing to build. There will be a number of amenity features, dining, recreation, et cetera. So the amenities are not only for the residents who will be populating the new structure. It will be also for the residents in our current campus layout of fellowship manner, Thames Edge, and the healthcare center or nursing home. Having ease of access for all residents within our campus to be able to access the new amenities is extremely important. And so the location, proximity, the grading of where this is put is relevant for us. Many of the individuals on our campus are very fortunate to emulate independently. However, there are also those who emulate with cans, walkers, wheel leaders, wheelchairs, et cetera. Additionally, we are not seeking to overdevelop the property and the land that we have while trying to maintain green space. For nature trails, rocks, hiking, et cetera. Things that are important to the future customer of our particular industry. And so, um, I I think the the only other piece that perhaps I should mention is we are affiliated with the Fraternal Order of the Odd Fellas. We have been since eighteen ninety two. Um, friendship, love, and truth are three of our core values that may seem outdated and old fashioned in some respects. But let me tell you, this is what a part of our organizational DNA today as they ever were, and these are guiding principles. Um, our our mission is to inspire individuals to live their best lives. It is our intent to create a vibrant, progressive community where individuals will come to live full stimulating and enriching lives. We feel a hundred and thirty years of history on our shoulder. The pandemic has been an inflection point for us. COVID nineteen has been extremely difficult on our industry. Um, we have been to think sharply and strategically on a plan that will allow us to remain solid and survive. For generations and decades to come into the future. And so that's a little bit about the motivation of an organizational perspective. And if there are no questions for me, I can turn the rest of the presentation over to our civil engineer.
That was.
Yes, um.
When you say community, you're talking about. Unity of your residents, not the greater rotten community that.
Yeah, that is, that is correct. Um, yes, well, in a sense, our employees who come from the the greater rotten community also benefit as well.
Uh, your request is for a building height of six. Residential life cares. Do any of the other buildings? They.
So I'll turn over any technical questions to our civil engineer, Phillips from Langin, and let him address those, if that's okay. Okay. Who's having questions at this time?
No, not at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brian Phillips. I'm a senior project manager of Langin Engineering in New Haven, Connecticut. I've I've long worked at it. Um, and I'm going to just give a brief overview of the site, site characteristics. So this plan here, we are at two thirty five Wester Town Road on this plan, north is. Or left. Um, and we are surrounded by residential parcels to the north, to the east, and south with Lester Town Road to the south and Military Highway to the west. Uh, we are in the R twelve zone, and the property itself is just under seventy acres. Sort of this this subtle piece is all of the existing skilled nursing facilities and living, independent living apartments. And everything to the north is what we are proposing. Um, additionally, the site generally slopes from east to west down to Military Highway. Um, within the vicinity of our proposed development, site grades range from about elevation one eighty five down to about elevation one twenty. So there is a significant slope across the property that we're dealing with. Additionally, we do have a rather large conservation area. Outlines. It's the western portion of the property, but our development is, you know, is constrained by the property line and the conservation area in addition to topography. Um, that we're dealing with. I will briefly mention that we are portions of the property do lie within the coastal boundary. Um, and we did submit the the CAM application as part of this application. Um, and essentially, the coastal boundary run ISACs of proposed development. Um, in reviewing the estate mapping, there's no coastal resources, significant natural features, or significant historical or cultural resources. I didn't want to develop it. Uh, we're also, there's no wetland on the site as well. And if given approval by the board, we do plan to submit a full site plan application to planning and zoning. Um, and plan to work with staff to submit a fully zoning compliant set of plans in relation to traffic, parking, stormwater, et cetera. Um, and with that, I'll I'll be in John Card, architecture team, to speak about the proposed. Thank you.
Good evening. Name is John Chrome. I'm with AG Architects, all of Tuscaloosa, Houston.
For that.
Fourteen fourteen Underwood Avenue. Our proposed development is. Has a number of features to it that have led us to place it exactly on the position of the site, the way that you see it, the conservative, that's conservation area that we have here. And then the property line that we have to, the significant grade that runs across this entire site is pretty, pretty intense. There is an area of the site that runs through a line that I'm pointing through right out here. That is a, an area of the site that is relatively flat, so it follows a contour line that keeps everything relatively flat. So, um, as you rise up to here or you come down the hill, uh, both road. If home road is located right here. And what we've done is we've located it so that it would come into an entry courtyard. Like space to give a maybe space in the middle and then provide a number of parking stalls and everything around the building and located a building entry at this point in my previous at right now. Um, all of this would be developed so that it is rated so that it is accessible to. That everyone who's parks here and follows this this line up here. It's a part of an idea of making the site. As much as we can. Um, available to people that. Will not be hindered by a lot of gray shade, even though we're dealing with a lot of gray shades going off. So we have this flat area that we're creating. We have created this site section to show you how we've integrated building to the contours of the site. We have. Relatively are showing what is a four story building. That is, is as compact as we're trying to get. Um, there are different types of living conditions when you deal with senior living, and some of them are people who want to live in a community where they have more space. Cottage living versus individuals who are becoming increasingly more frail and need to be in a more. Uh, communal setting that is close together, that gets you to the available amenities within the building, the dining, recreational facilities, the socialization areas. All of those are very important in aging crisis. One of the other elements that we strive to do with in these buildings is. Limit the amount of travel that an individual needs to take to get to these spaces. We tend to put most of all those amenities, movie theater. We tend to put most of all those amenities, movie theater, multi-purpose area for concerts and shows or hosting events, all on the same floors, on the same floor. And so what we have done with this is that we've got a line here that I call the Commons area. And we have a first floor area that is the whole Commons, various spaces. And again, this is very short because that the building is, yeah, has multiple wings to it. Um, but we do step this building up the hill. And the reason that we're at the sixty-two feet from the forty feet is that at our highest point of the building, which is at the deepest part of the site, um, we have a five-story portion. And that five-story portion contains central elevator core that will take um individuals from any wing or any floor and bring them down to the Commons level. So that we don't have multiple elevators throughout the building that are, you know, only taking care of a certain amount of distance that you have to get off an elevator, other elevator. We're trying to centrally locate the elevator so that you're on the elevator once you can get on any floor that you need. Um, the sixty-two feet is the highest portion of the building at that five-story building. And that's the web we're pointing out to is that the number. Um, there are other portions of this roof form then that would follow the rest of this building that are going to be below that, they're going to be above the forty feet but below sixty-two feet. And that averages. Point it out here, there's fifty-three feet, there's a fifty-eight foot section, and then there's a sixty-foot section on a wing that is the farthest to um the, the east on the plan. And the gray plane, it's a facing sun, it's kind of changes as this building, you know, sits on this site. And that's what we, um, we're, we're here to ask for variance to be acceptable in this R two, R twelve zone, which is a senior housing type communities. And I think I'll just leave it at that, that, that take any questions.
I'm looking at this, this here, where is the, where is this circular drive coming out there?
It comes in, it comes in at the, at the point right here.
The wall with this tire. Hold that seat, right?
That's correct.
If you were limited to forty feet, what, what, where would that cut off on the top of the building?
That, that operate through here.
Okay. Yeah. Windows of the four-story, that's below the, below the, below the gable.
That's correct.
That was coming all the way across, so.
It's four stories all around the building except it. One piece of a wings is right here where we would go to five stories.
Maybe I'm having trouble reading, reading the drawing, but it looks like the highest point is something that's further to the, uh, to the north.
Um, there is a point there, yes, there is a wing there. And the highest roof midpoint of that roof is at sixty feet.
So right where your, your microphone was resting, that's the highest point that I see, correct?
That is the highest point, but its great plane also rises with it as it's stepping up the hill. But you are correct, that is the highest.
That's twenty-two feet above where we're measuring the forty at, right?
Yes.
And that's where the elevator bank, the big elevator bank is, and I.
No, the big elevator bank is located where I have.
Then you don't need the sixty-two feet to build your elevator. Which will fall, right?
I do. Because this is the, this is the actual tallest part of the.
Oh. Then, then take me back to where we're measuring from, what is, does it change as we go up the hill?
Building is, uh, stuff as we go up there.
We're measuring the forty feet as the steps up the hill.
That is correct.
What appears to be the highest point is only, is sixty feet above base of it. Whereas downward elevator is.
The height of the midpoint of the roof at the elevator bank from measured from its great length is sixty-two feet.
Well, that's the sixty.
Yes, there is a great plane that runs around at uppermost. Uppermost wing right here that we're trying to get the building to nestle into this hill. This highest roof right here. This is six, sorry, is sixty feet from its great plane, which is higher than the great plane that is this wing right here where that point is actually at sixty-two feet, well, measured from that. And whereas this is now on a fifty-three or fifty-eight feet on this one.
Go to the, uh, the next one down. Well, if I'm in Navy housing, which you've got in the, the corner there, correct?
As per.
My, my view of Thames River is essentially blocked. Pretty much, correct?
It is fifty. It's, it, you know, it's, we go back to this. Because you're now looking at some of this roof right here. So some of these houses do have some view of these ones, right?
Essentially, that, that roof present the same level where it's which the Navy housing has to face it.
The roof, but the, the Navy housing is, is similar to the roof form that is.
Is there a reason why you can't step it down the hill more?
In what areas?
I believe it's a conservation easement envelope, so we can't.
There is a conservation.
Yeah, there's, the issue that we're having happening is that we have a conservation line that is right here. So it has, it has squeezed us into this pocket here. That if we didn't have this, obviously we had to boot this up to avoid any of that, any obstruction of.
Who, who owns that easement?
That conservation? That is.
It's, it's just a restriction.
The conservation assumption, the conservation estimate, um, restricts the use of that land.
I don't want a conservation.
Yeah.
But who's the holder of the, of these? Is, is the city town of Grotton or is it state of Connecticut or is it some private organization?
Uh, I do not believe it is a private organization.
It's, it's an easement on the property, so it's property.
Yeah.
They're restricted, don't want them to do, based on prior approval. Yes.
And, or you catch that?
It's an easement, so it's, it's still the, um,
It's still.
Property, it's still, the property owner owns it. The easement just limits what they can do on that company based on previous. Nobody else owns it, they own it.
Where conservation easements can be owned by the state, they can be owned by the town.
They can be.
Is this, this perfume, it's the way the parcel was developed over the years? And it was sold by someone subject to a conservation easement?
That's what I know, in, in its original development, it had conservation.
By the owner at that time. Or it's.
I don't believe that's, I don't believe that it's owned, if, if the property owner, we, they own the land. I don't believe that it is given to anyone, it's just a, a restriction.
Somebody can, somebody owns it that I can afford, or is it, it's either.
The town stipulated that that area be conservation easement. The previous application, you know, approximately ten years ago, so that, that was part of the approvals that were given approximately ten years ago.
That was my question, then the town, town holds easement?
No, the, the town doesn't hold easement, the town placed, the town made easement possible when the approval for the development. The easement exists on the land record.
Granted to the town, I'd hold it.
Not to the town, but.
Alright.
Well, this goes back to my question. Where's the eight existing buildings? Rough idea, give me an idea. What do you think?
They.
Sixty feet.
Well. Existing buildings are the single story on the upper side of the plenty. And then there are two stories on the lower. As they step down the hill. The, I believe the tallest building on the site is Fellowship Manor, it was right here. And I mean, I can't give you an exact, the height of that, but it probably from measured from the grade is probably the tallest building.
Is this put back? Oh, you're trying to put this. Needs to have, you know.
Yeah, again, she go back to, we're trying to create a central portion of the site that is the most accessible piece of the site. So that people can emulate the site. Be along, you know, well, well. Sixty-two feet, which occurs here in this, not all of this building. It's particularly weight. It's point where we're getting everybody from any of the other four now to main entry floor. Since the accessible entry button. One system of elevators. Gates people, any of the course. Now to, you know, as they.
So you're not thriving.
That's right.
Essentially rounding buildings. But you're not using sixty-two foot.
That's it. Which lines of the building would be, they would move, would come down for.
Small area.
If you can speak more directly into me.
It's, it's a small area that essentially is where you're going to. Be there.
Yes.
You'll need percentage. Are you not? Rough, give me a rough idea. And the sound. Where footage. Are you?
I have, I put it in the, in the overall development.
Yeah. Fall apart of the overall building.
Yes, sir.
Rose.
Of that side. This is the opening that's going. He's trying to get a handle on. But the hardship is, it's only be that. On.
That's because we're picking up buildings that are higher up on the site and connecting to those. And then bringing them down to this lower level, that the rest of the building. Rest of the building. Um, comes out to where it's two stories. Have a concentration moving here. And letting the comments here. That's connected to our healthcare.
Um, Brian Phillips with Langen. Um, I'll just add, you know, in addition to that, we're, because of the topographic constraints of the property and the conservation easement where this development sit. We're very striving to provide ADA accessible pathway for the residents to be able to get to this site without having to go upstairs or ramps. Um, so being able to locate this building where it's shown provides that ADA accessible pathway, not only, you know, from the existing development to the proposed building, but also within that existing building where, you know, alternate building would not offer that ADA accessible.
Well, it's.
You're done now?
Yes, yes. Again, we're having, I'm getting, that's busy here, nobody can hear you, so you have to speak into the mic.
So if I look at the existing land there, all your independent living houses, little houses and everything there are on steep slopes, correct?
Correct.
And so they're, they don't, they don't have ADA compliant access to that building, no matter what, right?
Cool. We're talking about this, which is.
Right, so who is going to access that building other than people in that building and, and maybe some of the people in the independent units who already have sites that aren't ADA compliant anyway, correct?
Only down here is where the, the grain of the site starts to drop off beyond.
Drops off considerable, and it's also pretty good. Hill up on, uh, from the top, at least this part, you know.
It slopes downs, certainly. Correct, yeah, they have certainly.
Of that. Maybe an admirable goal, but I think depending on how many people are going to use it from your community itself.
We're, we're trying to provide that accessible connection.
Fair answer. There were questions for you. In your letter, you talk about, you seem to cite something in our zoning regulations about height building or structure, but I I can't find it in my, in our zoning regulation. You cited, or it's too embarrassing to read. Which doesn't say what this, and you cited, you said. I'm wondering what, exactly what we're dealing with and what you want buried by us. Essentially, what I see is you want us to bury in nine point one dash eight, one, eight. Which says the building height in the RU, just for forty feet, correct? And all that refers back to chapter four, heights within the RU, R twelve restrict and whether.
Yeah, so then our use is the residential healthcare community, so we are asking for variables only within that use section of designing regulations, as you mentioned. Number eight.
That's what you want.
Only in the residential healthcare community, which is our use. Which allows up to forty feet, um, with the additional setback. With the additional setback, and I will say that, you know, we are in excess of either that amount of setback. The apartment in for this use is seventy-five feet, and we've added an additional minimum of twenty feet setback. So the variance were granted, correct? So we're, we're trying to keep the building even in excess of the renovation or as far back as we possibly can. It's still. And. Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment, Benny Nelson, CEO of two thirty-five Wester Town Road. I wanted to make a comment about the room of traffic on our current campus with our independent living residents to make sure. Everyone is properly understanding this. Which structure right here that I'm pointing to is Grand Ninety-two, which is our restaurant on campus. This location right here.
Okay.
And in this corridor that is being described as the ADA accessible corridor. We, this building that I'm pointing to here, Fellowship Manor, has plenty apartments of independent living. And the larger building that we're seeing here is the one hundred building nursing home. And then another building further down is Chelsea College here, which has their apartments. On this corridor, we have traffic, pedestrian from visitors in the nursing home, sometimes pushing residents in wheelchairs. To Grand Ninety-two to experience lunch and dinner. Fellowship Manor residents are walking up here to Grand Ninety-two with lunch and dinner. I'm seven residents who live in Dame's Edge. Up top and below, we're, we're at to Grand Ninety-two. For dinner activities, it's also our clubhouse. So I wanted to make sure that we're properly depicting.
I understand that, but those people that are walking from down the hill are walking up the hill, they're not.
These folks, yes, yes.
I mean, that's not a ADA compliant or maybe a okay slope, but it's, it's.
I understand. Okay, okay, got it. Thank you.
I have another question. Oh, for maybe for Tom. If we were to grant a variance at sixty-two feet, is that limited, is it, because this isn't the final site plan, is that limited to only that spot where the? Sixty, it, it, it goes up to sixty-two feet, or does that allow building up to sixty-two feet throughout the entire property?
Your motion can acknowledge the site plan as submitted, or you can also state that that certain area. And there's other areas that are sixty, so it's just a maximum.
Right, I think before we go to. Yeah.
Yeah.
What plans?
I just, you have it there, that's just an expanded version of it, they are, they've already been submitted.
How about just?
That's a part of the application. It's all part of the application.
Yeah.
You don't need to, they're not exhibits, they're part of the.
Alright.
You could just acknowledge that, that the application has submitted and acknowledge, and then cite the site, like the. You know, the, the, the dates and titles of the presentation.
One of those things.
That's like, well, that would be public. That will be.
And I will say, if given approval, we do intend to submit an application based on what you see on the plan here in this location.
Most to our lessons. Most. Most.
Yeah.
Any questions?
No, I have no questions.
No, just the other thing is, it was weather that came, just mention it. I'm not going to read the whole thing. But received prior to the meeting. And it's Chairman Ed Stevens. God in Fairview Retirement Community. And Stevens, patient for variance has been submitted by the applicant. So following on my promise. We're going through. Ronald Roxy. There's Ronald.
Or. I saw his name on Zoom. That. Uh, let him.
Yes.
Russia. He's there, he's here, I just know. So he can, he wants to take himself up.
Are you looking for me? This is wrong. Yes.
Did you order the email, let you send us?
I'm sorry, I'm having a difficult time hearing you because the, the sound is not that good.
If you, if you would like to say anything to the application, now is your time.
Uh, no, I, I don't, I have no more further comments than what I wrote in my letter.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody here speaking in favor? Oh, uh. Anybody here speaking in favor? Anybody here speaking in opposition?
We have questions, so the question. And when you come up, please sign your name in the sign in sheet for the minutes.
Good evening, my name is Sean Powers, I live at two ninety-eight Lester Town Road, property owner. Therapy property. I'm addressing the height variance for the building proposal this evening. Posed that this building will be planned in financial ability. Within my address since nineteen ninety-seven, I watched the development of the therapy property with a variety of banking decisions. You know, create an environment noncompliance with the mission statement of organization. Statement of this organization suggests friendship, love and truth, truth to the community they serve is a bit different. We as neighbors and watch this management group try to evolve into a board profit entity. And as a nonprofit, in a repair community, the story is. One member of the town, RTN, rest concerns from residents of Fairview community and as far as the cost and expansion of the property. Management explained the residence needs monthly fee rental increases of thirty percent. Investment that residents of properties that exist now need reassurances that they will be, see a return on their investment. These residents are fixed income people, to burden them with a higher cost, music community needs to support the residents when it comes to approval of permits. Back the town sees a limited tax revenue to also redo the need with this higher income. Not support the sixty-four height variance due to construction, maybe housing, funding the property. I have concerns about the ability to have police, fire department, personnel responding to emergency needs on the facility, light, buildings. Traffic on Lester Town Road and military highway will increase with both the number of residents and visitors, family members. Buildings should be no higher than the existing ordinance, definite financial expenses. Or is, well, we tell the community residents will not see excessive burdens in this project. Take your time. Work on this proposal. Anybody else to speak on this?
My name is Robert Shepherd, I live at sixty-one Blue Street, that's on Bailey Hill. So if you were to look at the site plan, I am fourth of the proposed property. I do have a couple of questions that I'm allowed to ask. Go ahead first.
You'll ask questions to the board, then the board will be able to respond.
Fair enough, so first question is, I noticed on the site plan that the, to the west side is the conserved area. There's also a large amount of wooded area to the north, which borders my property. Uh, my question is, is that also conserved, or is there potential to develop on that end? Does the, could the project, if not this phase or future phase, to push more closer to?
Richard. No, that's right.
Probably get all the. Yeah, we'll get all the questions.
Okay, that's, that's one. Uh, the next question I have also related to that is on my property, it borders a loose street, Virgo Drive. So I'm right on that corner, and behind me is the wooded area that comes south towards, uh, fellows. Uh, the end of Virgo Drive is a dead end that goes towards the woods, that wooded area, so my question is, is there a plan to, to use? Or egress or emergency vehicles or any future growth that would push through onto Bailey Hill? Uh, which would lead to a significant amount of traffic that we're not prepared for in our residential area. The sidewalks. Roads themselves are in disrepair, we have that has been paved over twenty years. I have significant concerns with future growth in the area, so that is all. Uh, additionally, I am opposed to the variance, and I look out, I upstairs, I second floor of my home, and I look out heading south. Over that wooded area, I'm very concerned to see a sixty-foot high structure rising off in a distance, potentially affect my property values. So I would state that I do oppose variance, and I would like to hear some. But you, you have. Right now?
No, we, we should wait till everybody asks a question, then they can respond on. Who else?
Hi, my name's Matthew Gillette, I live at two twenty Lester Town Road, I've been there about seven years, I've lived in Brock most of my life. Um, I, I have a couple of concerns about this variance. Um, I know during the initial phases of therapy developing the property, they had promised that they were going to have their staff primarily use the entrance on Military Highway to come into the property. It's been my experience as someone living right along Western Town Road that that is not the case, that their staff, it almost looks like a freeway sometimes during shift changes. As people zip up and down Lester Town Road, coming in and out of work. Uh, so that's a concern for me, if they're going to expand the facility, there's going to be more traffic on that road. Um, also, if you look on their plan and you see how it borders Navy Housing. It was to the east, the Sunday's commander's house is right there with almost directly across from where they want to build the tallest building. That property is perpetually assigned to whoever the commander for the naval sub bases, um, and it's going to block his view of the river. I think the intent of his property being located there was so that you could see ships coming in and leaving. I don't know how much that has weight with anybody, but I'm, I'm from a military family, my father served in the Navy, so it's something that spoke to me a little bit as someone who knows the area. And it's a little concerning to me to think that, you know, forty feet's a lot of, a lot of room to work, and it looks like even based on their map that they could go farther out rather than off. Just wanted to make that point. Thank you, gentlemen.
Anybody else close? Everybody. Both are there.
There's still some people on. On Zoom, if they would like to raise their hand. Taka, Gugati Livingston. Aubrey, Ashner. Anyone else in the audience?
Is Adrian Chell? And then at two ten Lester Town Road, Brian, also here with my neighbors across the street, two oh nine Lester Town Road, and then. The people from the neighborhood next to them, I don't know who's that address, but. I have say that, I'm speaking for myself, but I feel that many of the neighbors have the same sentiment, and first development was a lot on the neighborhood, um, the roads weren't tore up. They weren't really properly repaved, that's, you know, aesthetic, I guess, with the gas lines. The increase in traffic is definitely noticeable, I've lived at my home since two thousand and twelve, was before the first development. I am in favor of progress, I'm in favor of caring for our elderly. Having them enjoy life, I'm also in favor of this surrounding community enjoying why we moved to the area. It's a beautiful neighborhood, it's quiet. Everybody is very proud to live there, and I feel like what they've done already hasn't been so disruptive that we're. It hasn't affected our quality of life, but I feel like a bigger structure is going to increase the traffic. Um, another point about the emergency vehicles coming in. Um, and I think I might speak for everyone, where we're trying to understand why they cannot accomplish what they want to give to their residents than the current variants. Why does it have to be sixty feet? Um, and, you know, why does the elevator have to go so high, and I'm not an architect, I don't understand that, so hopefully they'll have to address that as well. Um, and also, it seems like, why can't they go longer instead of higher and have more people on a longer building than having a side track elevator? Um, if all the main amenities are on the first floor. Why do we have to go sixty-two feet? And I do understand something to do with the, the grade of the land, but again, is there a way they can redesign it so that if the real goal is to have everybody on the first floor? Maybe go longer instead of higher, but I am opposed to this, I, again, I'm not speaking for my neighborhood, I know that many people came to this meeting tonight. Because we are opposed to a sixty-two foot variance, and hopefully you'll consider keeping it the way it is because I'm sure they put in. Thank you.
Any else? Either here or on Zoom. Or sir?
Timothy W, Timothy W Sullivan, two oh nine Lester Town Road, want to take up something that Sean mentioned earlier. Who, who, and how is this going to be paid? That, that, that's my issue. I was, is the money going to be raised by raising the political rent? People who live in those houses below? That is, you know, the capability of the cost a lot of money.
Anybody else? Do I answer? John? All the questions? Yes.
And for the record, Brian Phillips, with my junior five-five-five, runner-up five, in your head. There were a few concerns about traffic. This site right now does have an administrative decision with the state office. Traffic administration also. So as part of the next step, we will be filing analysis of state of the traffic. You know, we plan to be in compliance with our regulations and stipulations of safety and success. Questions about the northern woodland portion of the site? And I guess going back to the proof, the approval application about ten years ago. That site and developed entirety of the site. You know, this piece was much larger. There were also single-family homes. All in that wooded area, which was approved as part of that application with a connection to the road to the north. Our application here has really tried to preserve as much of that open space as possible. And, you know, the application before you here shows that, you know, the the limit of our development from those residences to the north is approximately fifteen hundred feet with, you know, dense vegetation that we're not proposing to or have any future plans to develop. Besides walking trails, you know, low-impact types of uses. But no, you know, further building development. And we talked about the traffic, the traffic. I would mention that Navy Housing, which is considerably higher than our state. With dense vegetation along the property line, which we are planning to preserve as, you know, a natural buffer for our proposed development. I think that that hits on the comments raised.
Just to verify, there is no conservation easement on the north.
Correct. Correct. There was no restriction on that.
That answers the gentleman's question there. You also questioned whether you could punch through to Virgo Drive. Is that Virgo Drive on the end where you were pointing there?
Well, that's in, yes, correct. Virgo Drive. We don't have frontage. Our property has frontage. So we could put forth an application, but we do not plan to. At this point in time. Building a Sin City well at Fairview, two thirty-five Lester Town Road. Our intent is to limit the development to this particular land, but so as not to disrupt this parcel of land. If we do not receive the height variance, then the consequence of that is us being required to move the development further northward, which does bring other options into the.
So that means. As some, I think. Someone talked about going longer rather than higher.
Right. And so going, going longer rather than higher will require the development of more land that we're trying to preserve. It brings in to play another potential point of entry onto the campus for emergency vehicles, etc. So this particular thing has been done with the intent of being the least disruptive with the neighboring area. And we we do appreciate the feedback that our neighbors are bringing forth tonight. We are striving to be a good member of the neighborhood and of the community. And I will say that in my near five years of leadership, I have never fielded one single complaint from any neighbor about our business operations in this particular area. Not one in five years.
That answers, I believe, the questions that were raised and there and. Somebody asked, some asked about funding, but that's not our business. Our business is only, whether or not it truly sees a high, I also don't want to go there, so.
What nation rules? Nation of the highest tourist. In the five-story section? The elevator. This is all on.
The other building is located in the five-story section of the building.
That's correct.
Correct. The rest of the building on the fourth story.
May I understand?
There are portions of the building that are four stories. Portions, do you want it?
There are portions of the building that are four stories. Four stories through here. Five stories through here. Four stories through here. That's on the single story right here. It becomes two stories over here, farther to the north.
Why do you need a five-story building? Why do you need a five? Over six-four.
Baking up.
Is it not putting an elevator in a fourth story though?
Elevators connect the all, all the buildings.
That's a sample, right?
It's just, the reason it's five-story and it's just this portion of this building is as we are grading the building, we have this area that gets everybody down to the main common stuff.
By elevator?
By elevator.
There's actually a five-story building?
Correct. Why? Because this building is a floor higher. That's why. Okay, so this is four-story building. This is a five-story building. They connect. Okay. Okay. So. This. This is where the connection point between these two buildings is. Okay, the fifth floor of this building picks up the fourth floor of this.
Because.
Great. Yeah, because they have.
Right. This is the better. This is the story that. The story that we're talking about. Existence grade, as we go from east to west, is dropping significantly. So it becomes, as you come out, it reveals by story. That's. Spread for water. It still is at the same level, but because the ground is slipping down, you reveal the floor beneath.
So on the east side. The four-story. That's a lot current.
None of this site currently is low. It is all slipping east to west. Whereas for here, we will have a somewhat level roadway. But as you come down, you know, the grain starts to fade back down. This building extends out. Becomes five stories and then steps down and we get back to this location. As we.
Some way around. The important thing is.
Just the geography. Correct. To develop within what the constraints that we have, the conservation easement, this building. Where it sits, that is the solution.
What question? The building within your parameters of a hundred and seventy-four units. You will build it through a parameters of within twenty units, and you wouldn't need to go up so high. Probably.
I would say that, you know, this, this type of development, you know, the spaces, the entity spaces, the community development lets itself. That.
But if you did not get it and you extended outward to the north for to get a hundred and seventy-four units, you couldn't, you couldn't do that within a forty-foot limitation in that zone.
I'm not sure that we could build the program here for those services. And we would not be able to meet those ADA accessible requirements of, you know, getting people to the building, making sure that we're reducing as much as possible the travel lengths of residents within the building. You know, you're dealing with much longer lengths of travel for these residents to get to the central locations.
Right, but it's, it's length rather than up and down.
In terms of the site.
No, but if you were, if you were extending north.
And it's, it's all too narrow.
Yes, it's just a matter of, yeah. There are additional, they have to go slowly from one far end to another rather than short distances and then take another way.
Correct. And there are additional geographic concerns as we move farther north. You know, it starts to get steeper and move, breathe, changes significantly more. So there are additional.
It's steeper there?
Yeah.
Okay. Who's your questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Everyone back. I just re, just restate your name.
Robert Shepherd, sixty-one Lou Street. So I'm just, thank you everybody for giving answers and questions. I just have a little concern. Again, because my property is to the north on Lou Street, just past where that wooded area is, which is not conserved. Concerns me that if in fact Otello's doesn't get there sixty-two foot by variance, that the already has something that could push north closer to where our neighborhood is, which is also a very established neighborhood like the Lester Town, Starville area. We are not prepared, regardless of whether you have a clue or not. If you punch on to Virgo Drive, you start, there's only one way up and one way down. Bailey Hill State's, you got to go right down Lou Street. If we have bus stops right there, there's people walk there, there is no route. It is, I understand it's outside possibly what we're talking about here, this particular variance. However, I will tell you, it is, it would be a calamity. So I, I understand the request, the variance. I am opposed to it as well, but I'm also opposed to pushing forward. I just wanted to make that point because as a homeowner who's lived there for a long time, with many, many people on there. Very established area. Pushing into another neighborhood is also nothing.
Just for clarification, nothing's been approved. Anything here has to be.
Sir, I'm just, just stating my.
Just so it's clear.
Bringing also back the hand raised. What kind of question?
It was a prior site plan approval for units in that north area. Is that correct? Is that, did that inspire this?
Um, I. Sure.
Do you remember when?
I believe it was two thousand and twelve.
Ten year.
Six years.
Six year?
And our goal with this is not, you know, we're really trying to extend.
No, I fully understand. No, I'm just asking a question. Thank you. You want me to? I'm hearing that that may not fly. Can you live with something less? As if you looked at a review of something. Be pointy. Who's? Maybe fifty? Oh. I think you as a part of the unit. Your four units. Like, like. I think you left the ones to your neighbors. I understand why you have signed it. You may not have. This. Same. I guess the question is, can you do any better? Satisfy a community? And you do, and you live with something that's maybe not sixty-two, but shows direction, trying to. Spring.
We could look at that. I mean, this is a matter of grading. And.
Yeah.
You know, redistribution of units.
I think what Tom's asking is, there are, there are a couple of different ways that we should go. Because it's a variance application, they could modify and reduce your, still a brand of variance, but at a lesser height. They thought that was necessary. You could also request a continuance of this public hearing. Back and study that. Subject to see if you would come back. Wasn't, they wouldn't have to make a decision. They have thirty, since the public hearing was open, it's ninety-five days. Wasn't.
Yeah. If I'm understanding the question, I think we, we should extend.
You have to make a decision. All the discussion here. Be about, what is the? Building seat. Sixty-two. Okay. Satisfied. That it's something.
People request that. That's a.
And Tom, the deadline to release the materials?
Uh, you know. Enough time for the, for the board to review them, so. Thirty-two hours before a meeting. How long would you guys talk to?
I'm going by the Monday before the meeting.
Monday before the meeting. Good session.
Hey. Thank you very much. I appreciate everyone's.
Also.
Hey. Also our point. So we, we have extended the.
Continue the public.
Continue the public hearing until the thirteenth.
And just let me enter into record. The except. Other.
Yes.
The difference is seven one. It is seven, one. Anything else? That's another one of here.
But that was just a, the same letter from Zerashner, it was just. There are some. Except that as part of this. Thank you.
Uh, morning.
Planning had no comments, they reviewed the application last night.
Hi. Both comments were well timed. Let's step to the back of the first step. Oh. Post around first step.
If you want to just take a couple of minutes, just for the people that are here for the meeting, we're done discussing that, so if you wanna. You don't have to stay, we're just gonna go through the uh. One water street, so you could please exit uh quickly.
You're jacked.
Thank you. You can say if you want. Thank you all.
Here. I agree, so. Thank you, John.
Um, um, okay. Well, just as I.
Lot of movement to say, really. Grab on, you know what, that's all. Most of the last of the session on Lawrence Street. Most of the.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Would you write this out to Sharon Morris?
I'm, I'm sorry, it's kind of indistinct. You have to say that again, Ed, so a little.
That's a comment on Lawrence Street.
Uh. I'm sorry, I just can't understand what you're saying. You heard that guy on Zoom that was before us. He, he has the same problem. I heard this presentation for the most part, the last one. But the first one was pretty much wiped out. We've got to do something about that sound situation, Tom. Listen, Tom.
Your mother's street.
I'm, I'm reading the closed captions. That's the only way I can tell what's going on.
Well, no other commission has this issue, so I don't know what to do, but in, in the meantime, do you have any, any uh comments on one water street?
Okay, well, I talked to uh, um. Sean over there at the library a couple of times. There is no question that this particular room has a problem. I don't know what it is exactly. I thought that it was probably because the wrong microphones were being selected, but even. When people are talking directly into the microphones, they cut out. So. It's a mystery, but um. You know, I follow the uh beautification committee, because I'm on that, in the first room, as you walk in the door to the annex. There's not a problem with that room. But there certainly is with this one, so, but I can't tell you what it is, Tom. I just don't know. But it's there.
Go on, Murray Street.
What's that?
Do you have any comments on the first uh public hearing?
No, I'm gonna have to uh pass on that, because I really didn't hear anything, so I'd have to abstain on that one.
That leaves us with only three members, so uh, Mr. Springsteen, would you like to continue this?
Yes.
Well, it's, it was being closed, but you have sixty-five days to make a decision.
Okay.
You don't have to make a decision. You can wait until. It's the minutes.
It's the minutes.
Yeah.
Tom, can you? How would we do that? The only four that can make the decision would be us three and Bruce, correct?
Uh, it's another commission member. Watched the video, read the minutes, made himself familiar with the application, you could also make.
Alright, so if we were gonna continue or delay action.
Right, it's been closed, so it'd be, yeah.
Till next meeting, Bruce would have time to read the transcript of what Mr. Springsteen said, is that?
He could read the minutes, yes, and then anyone else, uh, any other member, to familiarize themselves as well.
Bruce, is that acceptable to you?
Yeah, it sure is, yeah. I, I could hear pretty much the, the second presentation. Between that, uh, the closed caption and so forth. Uh, that one I could certainly make a judgment on, but I just could not hear well on the first one at all. So yes, it's acceptable to me, certainly.
Is there anywhere we could repeat? Mr. Springsteen's presentation? Now? For, for Bruce?
We, no, we can't, it's too close, no, it's been, it's on. It does pick up. I, I'm in communication with Susan, she could hear some things, so she can make the minutes and make it. Get everything pertinent on paper. So that Bruce could, could read the document.
So then we would plan on taking action around the middle team, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. We're gonna defer action. And then, and the ads from uh. Do we get a, a, to email charge to?
Uh, I don't know, no, transcript, but definitely like minutes, yeah.
Alright, so assume Bruce has, has the packet now, is that correct? Bruce, do you have the packet that we have? Yeah, he has it.
He, he was, yes, he was on it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm moving along. First one is. Senator. That. And so. Motion. And it's. Move the way you prove to get inside for example.
No.
Yes, I'm sure on the minutes, Bruce?
Yeah, yes.
Ready to go on the meds? Bruce, there's a motion to approve?
Yes.
Yes, but I. Or carries, or zero. Um. Office.
I have none.
No.
Uh, there is none.
Uh, Stafford Ward.
None.
And Marshall, there is your. The move. Yep. From Santa Ana, Bruce?
Aye, aye.
Yeah. Bush, all the favor, aye, aye. He fifty-five, opposed, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Okay.